Here in Chambers and those who might be participating via the Internet, Zoom and all that good stuff, we appreciate you all being here and your interest in our great cities. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Tri-City Council held on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, here in Kingman City Council Chambers. First, we will turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith, for call to order. I mean, for a roll call.
Mayor Watkins, do you want to do the pledge first?
Yeah, we'll do the.
Okay.
I'm used to our city.
I know.
I know. Sorry. I've asked Mayor Sheehy to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now Clerk Meredith.
Mayor Watkins, if you want to start with introductions on the dais, Tanya will then pass the mic through the audience and then I will let you know who is on with Zoom.
Okay, great. I'm Ken Watkins, Mayor of City of Kingman. Cal? Uh-oh.
Cal Sheehy, Mayor of Lake Havasu City.
Jess Knudsen, City Manager for Lake Havasu City. Good morning.
Steve DeMeco, Bullhead City Mayor.
Travis Pruitt, Assistant City Manager for the City of Bullhead City. I'm sitting in this morning for City Manager Toby Cotter, who couldn't be here today.
Grady Miller, Interim City Manager, City of Kingman.
Tanya, if you'd like to pass the mic around.
I'm Tanya Ferguson, Deputy City Clerk with the City of Kingman.
Good morning, I'm Jamie Kelly, General Counsel, Mojave County Water Authority.
Cameron Moses, Lake Havasu City Council.
Sue Ann Mello, Mojave County Treasurer.
Chair Sam Lee, Vice Mayor, City of Kingman.
Thank you. Good morning, Juan Lizardo, Bullhead City Council.
Dan Alfonso, Councilmember, Bullhead City.
Edgar Kajera, Assistant City Manager with the City of Bullhead City.
Michelle Lynn, Lake Havasu City Council.
Nancy Campbell, Lake Havasu City Council.
Penny Pugh, Congressman, GoStar's Office.
Good morning, Michelle Beggs, ADOT Northwest District Community Relations.
Anthony Kislowski, Assistant to the City Manager, Lake Havasu City.
David Diaz, Chairman, Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission.
Sue Stein, Bullhead City Clerk.
Good morning, Kelly Williams, City Clerk, Lake Havasu City.
Tom Belshi, Executive Director of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns.
Good morning, David Lane, Lake Havasu City Vice Mayor.
Todd Steiburger, Assistant District Engineer, Northwest District ADOT.
Carl Cooper, Kingman City Attorney.
I'm Annie Meredith, City of Kingman City Clerk, and joining us online, we have Councilmember Ginny Coke from Lake Havasu City, Jerry Bracamani, and Shannon Davis, also both of Lake Havasu City.
Great, thanks Annie and Tanya, appreciate that. Once again, I would like to also point out that we do have water and coffee and a snack on a table back in back of the room if anybody needs to grab something to refresh yourself. First, we have on our agenda is item number three, Call to the Public. Clerk Meredith, do we have anything?
Mayor Watkins, nobody's asked to address you during this time.
Okay, thank you. Item number four, Approval of the Minutes from the July 19th, 2023 Tri-City Council Meeting. Can we have a motion for that? A motion to approve the minutes for the July meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Nope. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. I did want, in respect to that, I did want to thank Mayor Sheehy for conducting that meeting for me. I was out of town. I was, that was supposed to be my first meeting conducting and leading the meeting, and I appreciate that once again. Item number five, Updates from the Mojave County Board of Supervisors and other elected officials. I don't see, do we have any, we don't have any Board of Supervisors. Clerk Meredith?
No, Mayor Watkins, none of the supervisors are with us, but we do have our Treasurer, Sue Ann Mello.
Sue Ann, do you have anything you'd like to share from the county?
Just everybody's got a task, okay?
We need to help keep the county solvent, right? Okay, thank you, Sue Ann. Item number six, Legislative Update, League of Arizona Cities and Towns. Tom, I'd like to give some, turn some time over to you.
Mayor Watkins, members of the Tri-City Council, my name is Tom Belshi. It is my pleasure to be here today. We have been busy as your league staff in Phoenix. We're doing a number of things that I wanted to report on. First, I want to thank you, many of you attended the league conference. It was our largest ever, more people attended our conference than we've ever had before. That's a good problem to have. We're running out of places that we can hold it. We're running out of places that can hold us in one hotel, but we're going to continue to give that the college try and make sure that everyone has the best experience possible. But we really do appreciate it. It's your attendance and your ideas that make it successful, and so we really appreciate that. We're anticipating another interesting legislative session. It's going to be another difficult year for us. Just want to start out by saying that we knew that the state budget, because of the revenue cuts that they've made over the last several years, it's going to, was going to be tight. They were anticipating a $2 million surplus. Now, it was just reported by the Joint Legislative Budget Committee that it's going to be a $400 million deficit. What does that mean for us? What it means for us is that the state is likely, now, they have a, I want everyone to keep in mind that they have a significant surplus that they have, and, but they are going to be looking at our revenue sources, especially the change that was made to our share of the income tax. And it went from 15% to 18% in anticipation of exactly what has happened, and that's a significant reduction to income tax. Therefore, we are going to be, one of our number one, what I wanted to let you know, our number one priority is going to be the protection of two revenue types, and that is our 18% on our shared revenue, and then also the food tax, which is a significant revenue source for a lot of cities and towns. I know that it varies here in this particular area, but that's, those are two very important resources. Also, we're going to continue to look for replacement revenue that was because of the reduction of the resident, or the removal of the residential rental tax. That is something that costs cities and towns across the state $230 million. And so, these are all things that are in the back of our mind. Then I think that there are a number of issues surrounding housing. We'll start with, the league has several resolutions related to short-term rentals, and those have to do with density caps, population caps, or, you know, number, total number of homes in areas, and we're waiting to see how, we have an agreement not to get rid of it entirely, but we're also waiting to see as far as enforcement of state law related to nuisances goes. We made several changes of that, and we're, again, we're waiting to see what kind of reduction in those nuisances happens before we go back and try to make any changes there. But very important to many cities and towns that we find some way, what we have seen is, there was, it's just been recently reported that 22.7% of all units in Sedona are short-term rentals now, and it's growing in a lot of other cities. What that has led to is people not being able to really recognize their neighborhoods anymore. And, and so, we are, we are trying to get that message and show that, and it's, it's also affecting business, business patterns in communities as well. So it's not just residential neighborhoods that it affects, it's also, it's also neighborhood businesses, and, and so, we're keeping an eye on that and, and working with legislators that, that are sympathetic to those issues on getting legislation passed. Also, another big problem that's, that's rearing its head is, is short-term rentals, excuse me, sober living homes. I experienced this in, in my neighborhood. I live right on the border of Mesa and Gilbert, and Mesa developed a really nice set of condominiums across the street from my neighborhood, and 70% of the units, which about 90 units, were turned into sober living homes. Now, these homes are not licensed by the state, and they also have a lot of people who are not supervised, who are supposed to be receiving treatment, and there's been a number of incidents in the neighborhood, people passing out in cars when they're using, in open, cars that have been left in the driveway open, neighbors come out to find people passed out in the front seat of their automobiles. You know, a number of things like that, people roaming the neighborhood late at night, packages being stolen, you know, just a number of things like that. The problem is, is that the neighbors think that the resolution to that is not to have any more apartments or condos. That's what they said at these meetings. And what we're trying to point out is that there's a woeful lack of enforcement at the state level. We've been talking to the Department of Human Services, and their report to us is, well, you know, we think we can issue a license, but we don't think we can revoke it. To us, that's a surprise, because we have always believed if you have the power to create, you have the power to destroy. That's kind of a, a very important principle in state law. If you can offer a license, you can certainly revoke it. They have certain things that they have to do in order to be licensed. If they're falling down on the other requirements, that, that should be removed. So that's one problem that we're working with the governor's office on. The other is that they believe that they can only inspect licensed homes. We think that kind of defeats the purpose. If they're going through the licenses, they're on our radar, the ones that you really need to inspect are the ones that are not licensed. So those are two areas that we're really focusing on with, with this. There are a number of things that cities and towns can do as well, they already have the power to do, so we're going to put out some best practices that we think cities can adopt in order, if, if you're having an issue in your community, that you can take a step towards doing that. The other thing that we're looking at is giving cities the ability, not requiring, but giving cities the ability to do the inspections on behalf of the state, much like we do audits sometimes on behalf of the state at the Department of Revenue, we would work under the auspices of the Department of Health Services. You know, these are all ideas that, that we're working right now with the, with the governor's office on, but sober living homes are really becoming an issue in some communities. The other one is, is housing and zoning. As many of you remember, last year, we really had to stretch ourselves to come to an agreement, and we had a, we had legislation that we had worked out with some legislators. You remember that we worked with one particular legislator who's now left after his bill was basically killed by leadership at the, at the Capitol. It's difficult for us to know exactly where this is going. The only thing that we seem to see some kind of consensus on, on a bipartisan basis is accessory dwelling units, casitas, you know, tiny homes on property. This is an issue that we, that was part of our agreement. Most cities that, you know, that were involved in this felt that that was, that they were okay with what we came up with on accessory dwelling units as part of that package. And so, we will probably be working on that and let you know if anything comes about as far as accessory dwelling units are concerned. We also are trying to figure out if we want to be proactive on what was negotiated last year and where we were, we were willing to be neutral on that bill. The reason that I say this is, is that we have an election coming up, and we don't exactly know where things are going to go, and we would rather have something on the books that we can accept now, rather than something that may be pushed that we aren't able to stop. And so, that's something that we'll be working through with all of you as we, as we move forward. Now, the one bit of news that I want to tell you that we're really enthusiastic about is we are working with a group called Home Arizona, Home AZ, and this is a group of developers who don't believe that we can, we should be trying to legislate these issues. What they want to do is work on things with us that we can both agree to adopt. And so, yesterday, we had our first meeting with them and sat down with a number of cities and their development. So the idea was development services from, staff from cities and towns, sat down with developers and practitioners. We had private zoning attorneys, we had some people who were actual developers, and then we had some people who ran large construction companies, sitting down with us to talk about the kinds of things that we can do to make the process a little bit easier. One of the things that we told them about, and maybe you're aware of, is last year, the Senate President Warren Peterson, he, we passed a bill that he sponsored, Senate Bill 1103, and basically, this gives cities and towns the ability to do more parts of the housing process administratively. That means that there are certain functions that the manager's office and staff can carry out instead of them having to go before council, and, you know, you have to have public hearings and those kinds of things on it. These have to do with things like at-risk permitting, site plans, Platts, and there's one other item I know I'm missing, but there are four sample ordinances that we've put together, cities and towns can adopt, they're not required to, but we think that this will be a real help to speeding up some of the processes, especially with developers that you work with a lot and trust, and, you know, they, this can speed it up. Then we talked about things that developers can do. One of the things that we heard from cities and towns is that the types of applications that we're receiving right now from developers have really gone down in quality. And so, city staffs are having, spent a lot of time going back and telling them, you need to change this, you need to improve this. And so, we started to work out, well, what can we do? And we think that there's a big education component to this that we can work on together and continue to find some ways that we can do this through best practice education with both the cities and the development community. And everybody kind of came out of the room yesterday having high hopes for what we can do with this group, and we'll be reporting on specifics. We came, we came away with three specific programs that we're going to be working on already, and it was just the first meeting, so we feel very good about that. You know, we figure there'll be some other big changes that come along. The current Speaker of the House is considering a run for Congress. If he leaves that position, there is going to be a vacuum, and we think there's going to be kind of a nasty fight for Speaker of the House. Whenever there's chaos over there, it, it creates, it just tells us that we have to do things a little bit differently. So we're keeping an eye on that situation. But what I want to say more than anything is that the help we see, we receive from cities and towns, especially this group, regional groups like this, and you as mayors and elected officials in this area are extremely active with your, with your state legislators, and we so appreciate that because they really do listen to you, and they know, they get tired of hearing from us. Listen, when I walk into their offices, you know, they are not enthusiastic, okay? They don't want to see league staff there. A lot of times, they think that we're these rogue agents that don't really care about what you think, we just, you know, we oppose their legislation because we're a liberal bastion over there, and we don't care about what you all believe, and that they cannot believe that you are in support of the things that we do. When you tell them that they are, and we're all together on this, and that we really do work for you, it has, it has a huge effect for us, and that's why we're able to be successful in defeating so much bad legislation. So with that, happy to answer any questions that anyone has, and again, we just really appreciate your support.
Thank you, Tom. Mayors, managers, any questions for Mr. Belshi? That's a lot of information you just gave us, and we hope a lot of it can move the way we want to do, so.
And again, with your help at will, and a lot of the stuff that I talked about, obviously, we'll start having our Monday calls right before the beginning of the year. We hope you'll join those. And I just want to encourage you, if you have managers, if you want to be, you know, want to have good information about the legislative session, we're, we're encouraging managers and other staff to attend the Monday meetings. It's not just a mayor's meeting, it's also staff meeting, it's where, you know, we're going to talk about the direction that things are going in. So anyway, with that, thank you for the time, and I'm really glad to get out of the office and come up here, so.
Thanks again, Tom. Item number seven, Arizona Department of Transportation Update. Todd Steiburger.
Currently, right now, we have the Walnut Creek to Holy Moses Wash paving project that's just west of Kingman here on I-40, goes out to milepost 33, doing bridge repair work, guard rail improvements, and then they'll start paving at the end of November on that segment. We also have the East Kingman TI westbound bridge, it's in, winter shutdown here currently on I-40 in the City of Kingman. We have the North and Nothing project on the US-93 corridor on the county line, Mojave County line, doing guard rail upgrades on that project. They'll be doing pavement repairs in November also on that project. East of Kingman here at milepost 83 on I-40, we have the Willow Creek Bridge, number three, that's a new bridge, it's under construction, it'll be going through the winter. We also have the two SR-95 paving projects down in Havasu and Bullhead, they've currently started paving on both of those projects. Will be wrapping up in the springtime, early summer next year on those projects. We also have the, on State Route 68, just in Bullhead City, all the way out into Golden Valley to about milepost 14, that's a minor pavement service treatment project. We also have out on US-93 around Wikiup, we're going to start a pavement preservation project in that location. And then also, coming up, just right after the first of the year, we're going to be advertising down on I-40 from the Needle Mountain TI to the SR-95 TI, a Millenfield project. We also have the West Kingman TI, it's going to probably be slated to advertise right after the first of the year. And then we also have the two other TI projects, the Kingman Crossing and the Ranch of Santa Fe, that's a partnership with the City of Kingman, and we're looking at advertising those projects coming up at the end of this fiscal year. Any questions?
Thank you, Todd. Actually, I'll start it off. I do have a question. I think, thank you for mentioning the West Beale Street bypass, and of course, how long is that process going to be? I know you mentioned it right after the first of the year, advertising for bids on that, and then what do we think? Once again, I know roundabout, what are you thinking, breaking ground?
Okay, you'll, you'll be looking at about a two-month advertisement on that.
Okay.
And then you're looking after that's advertised, a month to review bids approximately, and then probably a month after that, they'll start construction.
Okay, that's all good news for Kingman. And of course, our other TIs that were in the process of also. Thank you, Todd. Mayors, managers?
Yeah, I have a question on SR-95 in the Bullhead area. You said it started, it hasn't started as of Saturday when I, when I drove to Needles. What is the actual start time and the anticipated finish time for that?
The, the actual start time will be end of this month, beginning in November, and we're looking at wrapping up in March.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. Anybody else? Okay. Todd, thank you again for that report. Item number eight, Rural Transportation Update, Mr. Kevin Adam. Kevin, I saw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Councilmembers. Glad I could join you. We just wrapped up the Rural Transportation Summit last week. We had about 270 officials from across the state that participated, thought we provided some very valuable insights as far as the, the state of transportation infrastructure. I think we also made a very compelling case to address the underinvestment with transportation. In fact, have to, I'm not sure if she's there, but Councilmember Nancy Campbell, Lake Havasu City, and who happens to be Vice Chair of the ARTAC Board, did a terrific job, as well as the rest of the board, of highlighting some of the projects across the state that we are pursuing funding for. And, you know, I think everybody was very satisfied with the outcome of the summit. With that said, I think there are some tremendous challenges going into next year, just reinforcing the budget update that, that Tom just gave you, and revenue sharing, whenever there's a projected structural deficit, I think revenue sharing is always at risk, and I think that not only the, the income tax revenues, but from a transportation perspective, HERF, I think, is, is also traditionally been a very big target. Costs a lot of money to develop and maintain the infrastructure across the state, and you can shave off a relatively small percentage of that funding to make up for a pretty sizable gap in your, in your budget, if in fact, you do have that shortfall. And so, I think HERF is always at risk. And so, as far as the ARTAC agenda for next year, we have compiled a list of priority projects from across the state that we will be pursuing in the event that there is one-time funding available. I also think that it's important to go through this exercise where we're continuing the dialogue, keeping the infrastructure needs visible, and it's important in good times, if we've got one-time funding that's available, that we can try to prioritize for transportation as we've done the last couple of years. I, I think that's great, and I think that's worked out very well for us. But conversely, when we're going through difficult times, and we have a, a projected $400 million deficit that, and they are required to have a balanced budget, I think by putting our priority projects out there and giving a good visual as far and giving a good visual as far as what's currently not being built and what will continue to not be built and maintained, would only get worse, or that problem would be exacerbated, if not only do you address the shortfalls, but you add to them by going in and raiding or taking away existing dedicated transportation revenue, which was a very common practice till about five years ago. There were a couple of years where there was over $200 million in HERF revenues that was directed away from ADOT, as well as local road systems, which just again exacerbated the, the, the shortfalls and the underinvestment that was occurring on our transportation infrastructure. So we will continue to make the, the case and really provide some visibility to the state of the infrastructure. Another area that we're looking at is we want to continue to keep the Arizona SMART program going forward, particularly if you have lean revenue years. What the SMART program does is provide assistance to rural local governments to help them pursue federal transportation grant opportunities, including providing some or all of the local match that is often required. So being able to maximize the, the level of federal dollars that we're able to bring back to the state, you know, and that's quite a return. You know, a lot of times where we're talking, you know, four federal dollars for every dollar, you know, state local dollar that we contribute, I, I think is a phenomenal return, particularly when we do have the, all of the unaddressed needs out there. So that is, I, I think, an overview of where things are. And we are with the league and Tom as far as the, the concerns about if they do have to go through a process of figuring out how to address gaps in the, in the budget and balance it. Shared revenues are always a target, whether it be income tax or local HERF. So thanks for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, thank you for that update. Any questions? Mayors, council, and managers? Yes?
Hello, Kevin. Thanks for the update. I have a quick question for you. You mentioned the smart funds, smart funding. Do you project that as increasing this coming year, or should we expect a decrease? What's your thoughts on it?
Good question. Currently, right now, over the last two years, there's been 62.5 million that has been appropriated, 50 million the first year, and then another 12.5 last year. As this was a very new program, and historically, local governments don't pursue a lot of federal aid for infrastructure projects. I don't think there was a lot of certainty going into this as far as what the level of interest would be and where it would come from. So when the program was put together, there were a lot of question marks. And as a result, the way the funding is allocated, there, there are currently five pots, and the funding was equally distributed between the five, where, and again, this is all greater Arizona, but for counties, the, the threshold between the two pots was 100,000, and for municipalities, it was 10,000. And what we are seeing is that the, the larger pots are being exhausted. But those pots for the, the smaller counties, the smaller municipalities, and in fact, the smaller municipality one, I, I think, has been completely untouched. And that does bring about concerns that if we have these unused funds available, they will be a potential target to be raided by the legislature. And it's not a, a situation where the demand isn't there. It just for now appears to be with the larger rural communities. And so we are looking at reforms to try to improve the efficiency of the fund. We certainly want to make sure that those smaller communities have the opportunity to participate. But at the same time, we don't want these unused balances building. And, and so we will be looking at reforms there. So there is roughly about half of that 62.5 million is still available. If we have reforms in the distribution, I think that will be resolved. I don't think there's any question it would have been exhausted had it been open to more folks. So, and, and sort of in that same vein, depending on the revenue outlook, there will be an effort to increase and provide another appropriation to that program if, if there is available funding to work with.
Kevin, remind us again of, you mentioned smaller communities. What's the population guideline on that?
So the five pots, there are two for municipalities, two for counties. They're, it's all in greater Arizona. So for the counties, there's a pot for populations under 100,000, one for over 100,000, and the same for the municipalities where that threshold is 10,000.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Kevin? Okay, thank you again for that report.
Thank you.
Item number nine, Mojave County Water Authority update. Ms. Jamie Kelly. Welcome, Jamie.
Good morning. I'm Jamie Kelly. I serve as General Counsel for Mojave County Water Authority. I'm also a member of the Arizona Reconsultation Committee and the Strategy Team for the Post 2026 Guidelines. Progress has been slow. It has been slow, but that has changed. Last week, the Bureau of Reclamation released its scoping report, and it published in the Federal Register, the federal action that is contemplated to be taken, and that sets forth the purpose and the need for the federal legislate action, which will start the NEPA process. The scoping report, the Bureau received some 24,000 comments. That's a lot to sort through. There were about 318 substantively unique comment letters, and the rest were forms, Form Plus, or duplicate submissions, and a Form Plus is the form letter plus a few personal comments, so that it's not exactly the same form. Of those 24,000, some 99% of those letters were from individuals. So there were some motivated people out there sending letters. The Bureau took those comments and coded and categorized them, and then put them into a database, and have generated a huge appendix, which categorizes the comments or portions of the comment letters by topics. And it actually sets forth the language from the comments letter in the exhibit. It's 265 pages. I have not yet read it. There were 10 themes that were identified from the letters that people would like addressed in the next guidelines, that supply and demand imbalance, a holistic approach and sustainable solutions, their concerns about the scope of the federal action, the term of the guidelines, the role and the interplay of the upper and the lower basins, operation strategies, tribal water rights, conservation and storage programs, augmentation, parallel processes, which refers to conversations with Mexico by the International Boundary Water Commission. The scoping report also set forth the proposed federal action, and the purpose and the need for that action. I'm going to quote from the Federal Register, it's kind of long and complicated, but it's the attorney coming out. "The proposed federal action is to adopt specific guidelines for the operation of Glen Canyon Dam and Hoover Dam to take effect when the 2,000 guidelines expire to provide for the sustainable management of the Colorado River system and its resources under a wide range of possible future conditions due to a changing environment." That's really big. That's really broad. So we'll see what they do to narrow that down. They use the term "changing environment" to stay away from climate change. They are concerned about aridification, the hotter drier conditions, continued low runoff is a concern, as well as the low reservoir storage. The proposed guidelines will have three elements. They're going to identify circumstances that the Secretary will allocate, reduce, or increase the annual amount of water available for consumptive use in the lower basin states to be at, below, or above 7.5 million acre feet, consistent with the terms of Arizona, California. They're going to, it's going to coordinate operations between Lake Powell and Lake Mead, particularly under low reservoir conditions. It's going to provide for storage and delivery of conserved water in Lake Mead and Lake Powell, which is, which is a change, because right now you only store in Lake Mead, to increase the flexibility to meet water use needs for both reservoirs, including storage and delivery of non-system water, exchanges and water conserved through extraordinary measures by or for tribal, agricultural, or municipal users. In developing that approach, they're going to consider all storage in the system, looking both at the upper basin reservoirs and the lower basin reservoirs. Under the O-7 guidelines, they have focused on the lower basin reservoirs. They're going to include additional opportunities for conservation, augmentation, demand management, which is a term from the upper basin that I guess we'll start using in the lower basin now, and water management strategies. And here's the, the one that will bother the upper basin. They're going to provide for the temporary emergency measure or actions to be taken from the upper basin reservoirs to protect the critical infrastructure of Glen Canyon Dam, provided they remain within the terms of the Record of Decision governing the operation of those upper basin reservoirs, and there are seven of them. That arises as an issue because two years ago, they released from Flaming Gorge Dam just about half a million acre feet of water, and withheld from delivery a like amount from, that Lake Powell was to deliver to Lake Mead to create a million acre feet behind Glen Canyon Dam to bolster the levels of Lake Powell. That water has since been repaid to both systems and its, its equal, but it was quite distressing to the upper basin states to have to send water to maintain the level of Powell because they believe that obligation belongs to the lower basin. The need for the proposed federal action is stated as the Secretary's required to coordinate the operations of the, all dams on the Colorado, all Colorado River reservoirs under the Colorado River Basin Storage Act. The O-7 guidelines expire the end of 2026. The O-7 guidelines fail to adequately reduce the risk of shortage to lower basin state users. There's a widely acknowledged imbalance between water supply and demand, and that's going to be exacerbated by the continued aridification. They want to provide for expanded and more innovative uses of conservation, and to address tribal concerns regarding Colorado River Basin management. In the development of the O-7 guidelines, the tribal nations did not have an active part. They will have an active part in the development of the Post 2026 guidelines. They have developed a sovereign-to-sovereign work group where the basin states will be meeting with the basin tribes and the Bureau, and they'll be exchanging information. The purpose of the proposed federal action is to update and expand the management guidelines of the Colorado River system, using the best available science and our operating experience from the two sets of previous guidelines, which are the O-7 guidelines and the first guidelines that I think were put in place in 1970, to provide more certainty to Colorado River water users with the amount of annual water that will be available for consumptive use under the warm, changing climate conditions and low runoff and low reservoir conditions. They're going to provide additional mechanisms for conservation and storage of deliveries in the Colorado River reservoirs, provide new or enhanced opportunities to basin tribes, to basin tribes to benefit from their tribal allocation. They didn't say "use," they said "benefit from." So we're hoping for some opportunities for water. And to provide flexibility to build resilience and accommodate future needs and growth supported by Colorado River water, including the integration of tribal water rights not yet resolved, or what, once they're resolved. From this scoping report, they're going to, in the next six months, between the fall of 2023 through the spring of 2024, develop a reasonable number of, and range of options of alternatives to be evaluated in the EIS process. It is a stakeholder process. I imagine the Bureau will start holding those meetings. There will be an opportunity for Mojave County Water Authority to provide input. They anticipate it'll take six months. Once those alternatives are developed by the spring of 2024, the Bureau will start modeling those alternatives. The published timeline indicates that it should be released in December of 2024. My guess, it will be the last day of CREWA, which is known as the Big Announcement Day. CREWA is the Colorado River Water Users' Association's annual meeting in December in Las Vegas. A comment period will follow the EIS. They hope to release the final EIS in '25, or late '25, early '26. Needs to be in place by mid-'26 because they're going to use it to develop the '27 annual operating plan. The Bureau will deploy a tool it has developed, they're hoping to deploy it. Carly Jurla said at the end of this month, Kaila Ho said the end of next month. They call it the Operations X-Generations Web Tool. It is a modeling tool that will be available online for all of us to use to explore options and to create different scenarios and to evaluate how those scenarios will impact our use. The other activity occurring on the river is the anticipated release of the draft SEIS to the 2007 guidelines. As you'll recall, it was released earlier in this year. It modeled two alternatives, it modeled three alternatives. The no-alternative action, alternative one, which was the current cuts in Arizona plus more, respecting the priority system. And the second alternative was current cuts plus more, but modifying the priority. Everybody rejected it. The states, seven states, proposed an alternative that the Bureau has been modeling. We believe it will be, the draft SEIS will be released in the next 30 days. They did say by the end of December, or by the end of October, but we'll know when it's released. The seven basin state plan proposed voluntary compensated mitigation to create the two to four million, million acre feet of protection volumes. I have only seen reports that show about 1.7 million acre feet is anticipated to be created in, through 2023 through 2025. I have only seen those numbers based on signed agreements. Some of the large users in California have not been able to sign agreements because they have to comply with California CEQA process. So time will tell. I did not prepare an actual report on the Groundwater Subcommittee or the Arizona Governor's Council on Water Policy. I will tell you, I serve on the Groundwater Committee. It has been a rocky go. Progress has been very, very slow. Conversations have been very, very heated. I think you've probably read in the press that Farm Bureau Representative Stephanie Smallhouse resigned, Senator Kerr resigned. We have had one meeting since that resolution. We are able to- We are able to, as a subcommittee, agree on broad concepts of what we believe the groundwater regulation should look like. We are not doing any specific language recommendations. And where there is opposition, that opposition is being noted in the report. What has been agreed to is some type of, well, we haven't really gotten anything concrete. Conservation is proposed. Everybody gets a set amount of water to use and everybody is subject to conservation. It applies equitably throughout the basin. If ag has to conserve, municipal has to conserve, industrial has to conserve. We are, quite frankly, just discussing, just finished discussing council duties and will be looking at council composition and council creation, how that is recommended. The committee overall is not supportive of an election process. They believe it should be by way of appointment. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. I mean, I didn't share much on the, the subcommittee because we've really not made a whole lot of progress.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions for Jamie?
Yes.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Ms. Kelly? Legislative session is fast approaching. Is there anything that we should be looking at or at the state level? At some legislative bills that could put us in a better situation?
Well, MCWA hopes to introduce, and they'll meet with the local legislators, a bill which will amend the notice of intent to drill a well. It's a permit process. Right now, all you have to do is final the notice of intent to drill a well to DWR, and they have a very short timeframe by which they have to turn around and issue that permit. It, it applies throughout the state of Arizona even though circumstances are different, particularly for those communities along the river. All water, without regard to whether or not it is an exempt well or a non-exempt well, is chargeable against Arizona's water entitlement. And for the counties of Mojave and La Paz, any water used that is Colorado River water is charged against the applicable Section 5 contract holder service area. So use Bullhead City for an, well, MVIDD is not here. We'll use them as an example because they tell me they have approximately 2,000 of these exempt wells. Somebody wants to drill a well to put, build a house on their three-acre parcel in MVIDD, they would just apply to DWR and obtain a permit and be able to drill their well. If they were to, whatever water they pump from that well, which is what, 35 gallons per minute for an exempt, is chargeable against MVIDD's contract, not only by the terms of its contract, the language in its contract, but the reported decision interpreting MVIDD's contract, which is MVIDD versus Norton. Once they get that number, because MVIDD is required to advise the Bureau how many wells are in its district, the Bureau assesses full use. The maximum amount of water used by that exempt well, and they assess that against the Section 5 entitlement. So it can reach to be, can be a pretty significant number because an exempt well can irrigate an acre and a quarter of a year, acre and a quarter of land in a year. We don't know of any other legislation. We hope to have that one introduced. Any suggestions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, no suggestions. Just the session's fast approaching and we had continuous conversations over the last several years about water transfers and, and things along those lines. So I didn't know if there is, if this was the year we're going to get some legislation that, that could protect us in some way or another.
Well, the water transfer bill would be appropriate. We have not discussed it at the authority. Senator Borelli, I think, introduces it annually. It never gets a hearing. I know you're surprised it never gets a hearing. I have been advised that that will always and forever be opposed by Central Arizona Water Conservation District because they believe it infringes upon their contract because there's a couple of sentences in their contract that says they can acquire water from within that 160, what, 164? What's the number? 164625? 652. 164652. That was reserved for online river. One of the things I think we need to look at as we go into the post-2026 guidelines and shortages, that we have, the river communities have benefited from the Shortage Sharing Agreement, which essentially says up to a certain point, Central Arizona will absorb our shortages. That's because they get to use our unused entitlement. Our contracts all say our shortage amount is deducted from our maximum entitlement amount, which would not put us in a place that we have to share. But I'm concerned that Central Arizona, CAP subcontractors have the ability to store unused Colorado River entitlement underground. The river communities do not. Storing in Central Arizona is not an economically attractive alternative to the river communities because you would have to pay to send the water to Phoenix, pay to put it in the ground, pay to take it back out of the ground, and then exchange the recovered water in Central Arizona with CAP for Colorado River water. So it's kind of complicated. And we're not going to ever do away with their ability to store, but I don't think it's fair or equitable that those Central Arizona communities can store water if we are required to cut our use. And right now, they can. So I think that's one of the issues that we need to look at going forward. So, okay.
Jamie, you had referred to the water allocation, especially it affects our sister cities in Bullhead and Havasu. And the wells, how, how many miles, just for education purposes, how many miles off the river does that affect when you have to pull permits? And it affects, it takes water out of their water shares?
We are concerned about areas within defined, wells that are drilled within the defined service areas in the Section 5 contracts. The aquifer or is defined by USGS under the Colorado River Accounting Surface is quite large. And the state of Arizona has not accepted that determination. However, Bullhead and Havasu are bound by it and by the terms of their contract. So it can, we, we are only for accounting purposes concerned about the service areas, which are exhibits to their contract. I mean, if they drill outside of the service area and it's chargeable against Arizona's entitlement and it doesn't hit somebody's Section 5 contract, it's going to reduce the amount of water that Central Arizona Water Conservation District can accept delivery as excess water.
Okay. Thanks again. Any other questions from Ms. Kelly? Yes, Penny.
So I have a question for Jamie.
Penny, do you want to come up to the?
Could we each on a microphone?
Or do we have a microphone we can hand you?
Easy question. Who's carrying that legislation at the state for your well?
We have a meeting on that tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
Can I, can I just have you guys circle back on that and both have a microphone so the people online can hear you?
Penny, your question was answered, but yeah. I mean, you may. Jamie, go ahead and, there you go.
My question was, who is going to carry, what legislator's going to carry that legislation for that well?
And we are meeting with local representatives and senators, elected officials tomorrow to discuss that.
All right. Thank you.
Well, as you mentioned, Senator Borelli introduces it every year, but it usually gets shut down.
The, the water transfer bill, yes, he does. I, I want to say it's three or four years now in a row that he has introduced it.
Right.
So, Mayor? Yes. It may be interesting with some of the commentary that Jamie had mentioned that's going on with all of the discussion. Senator Borelli released a letter. So it might change some of the dynamics of how the committees are. We could hope. It, I think it's our best chance so far that we've had over the last few years is the senator's actions that he took just this last week might force a hearing of our bills this year. Doesn't mean it's be successful, but at least force the hearing.
That is better news.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Jamie. I own a number 10 mayor's reports and city updates. Steve from Bullhead, Mayor Demiakal?
Hi, thank you. Well, where do I start? I'll go easy on you this time.
Is it because lunch is here already?
Yeah. Travis and myself, we're going to be traveling. We're going to be leaving the 12th of November to Washington DC for a week, and we're going to be meeting with BOR. We'll be meeting with multiple senators and multiple congressmen. And our, our goal is to bring back $300 million for a BOR grant to, to Bullhead City. We'll be meeting with head of BOR and multiple EPA, multiple different agencies out there. And we've already had Zoom meetings with them and we've got a very good shot of getting that money. It'll be used for a state-of-the-art new water filtration system and also for some of our existing infrastructure that is depleted. And we're also going to be meeting with some other thing, other. I'll, I'll go easy on you. We'll leave it at that. Also, we're working right now on probably one of the biggest economic development projects in Bullhead City history that, you remember, they said we got to put us on the map. Well, this will, you'll be able to see us from space on the map with this one. And I'll just leave it at that, but thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
That was short and sweet.
Mayor Shi, thank you very much. Yeah, I'm always glad that Mayor Demiakal goes first because then it, it lets me know where to go on my side. Last time you took us pretty hard, so. I would like to thank Mr. Belshi for being here. You know, nearly 80% of citizens across the state of Arizona live in a city or town. We're coming off of Arizona Cities and Towns Week that is sponsored by the league just last week. And it's really important that we talk about local control. And the reason why is that we all live in a city or town and we're elected to serve our citizens. And obviously, government closest to the people is the most effective. So thank you, Mr. Belshi, for being here. Thank you for the work that your organization does. And we'll continue to be a partner to make sure that we have local control and can make local decisions in our communities. I would also like to just recognize publicly the contributions of Mr. Don Loughlin, who passed away this weekend. He really has been visionary for our region. He has really, can you imagine, coming in 1966 to a barren part of a desert to create what he created? Certainly, it shaped Bullhead City, holding Seren Kingman and of course, in Lake Havasu as well. So the contributions of, of Mr. Loughlin do not go unnoticed and we wish him or his family our condolences during this, this tough time. A couple of updates for Lake Havasu's. We have some pretty exciting things that are going on. We, this evening at our council meeting, will have a discussion about Site 6. And Site 6 is a free boat launch facility, but it's also a fishing pier. It's actually what started Lake Havasu. Mr. McCullic went to Site 6 first. But we'll be redoing the boat launch facility to make it more user-friendly. Really exciting project, working with Arizona State Parks on that. In our last council meeting, we awarded a bid to redo our island walking path. So it's a 3.6-mile multi-use activity path around our island. It's in really bad disrepair right now, but we're really excited to be able to get that project done. Since we last met, we also had a really large Arizona State Trust Land sale of 91 acres on the island in Lake Havasu. It was a former golf course. It now is, was purchased through that trust process by a developer out of Scottsdale, a tech billionaire that is looking to maybe do the biggest economic development project so they can see both of us from space. But we're not sure. It's so fresh. It just happened at the end of September. So we haven't met with them at all, but they are doing other developments in the state of Arizona that are multi-use and really exciting projects. So we're very hopeful that something exciting will, will come from that as well. It will have to go through a public process, obviously, with zoning and general plan and those types of things. So it will be a conversation with our community. We also are getting really close to opening up our courthouse. It'll be the first municipal courthouse in Lake Havasu City. We've worked in a consolidated format for many, many decades, but now we'll have our own. That is set to open in mid-December, so really excited about that. Next time we host tri-city council, hopefully we can be in that facility and, and show that off. We also are doing a whole lot of roadwork. So in addition to the work that Mr. Steinberger mentioned on Arizona Highway 95, which is fantastic, we also have nearly $10 million in road projects that are occurring in Lake Havasu City and our major road network. So we're really excited about that and getting those projects moving forward. And then, of course, it's event season. The weather's turning into why we all live in Arizona. So we invite you all to come to Lake Havasu or check out golakehavasu.com to see all of the events. Our next event is this weekend with our Lunder Bridge Days Parade, which will be celebrating the heritage of Lake Havasu City. So that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Shihi. Appreciate that. Actually, I'd like to once again recognize our interim city manager, Grady Miller. And welcome and glad to have you on board. And I, Grady has done a great job already getting up to speed and keeping things moving in our city, and I appreciate that. As far as things going backwards, we just last week had our Walk Away from Drugs. And Clerk Meredith, that was what, our 15th, 16th, do you remember?
17th.
17th?
Largest event in the state of its kind and longest standing as well.
Thank you. And we do want to recognize, we actually even received a certificate of appreciation from Congressman Gosar's office. And Penny, if you could pass that along, that thanks, we appreciate that. Of course, we have had our Route 66. October and September are busy for Kingman. Celebrations about Route 66, also Andy Devine Day's rodeo and parade, the county fair. All these things going on in our great city, and we appreciate all the participation from our citizens. And actually, in a lot of things, our county too, all of, all your cities because of, for example, the county fair. Appreciate that. As Todd mentioned, as of just last week, both our TIs, Kingman Crossing and Rancho Santa Fe, the plans are at 95% stage and have been submitted to ADOT for review. And Todd mentioned that, and so those things are exciting and coming forward. I think that's about it. Oh, one gem that we have going on, it's an ongoing project, but we already have one block of it basically done. And that's our Beale Street, Beale Street Improvement Downtown here. So if you get a chance, when you're leaving between second and third, we've already widened the sidewalks, narrowed down the street, have bump outs, half, half-block crosswalks. And that's going to be indicative of what our downtown Beale Street is going to look like as the project moves forward. Right now, of course, they are working on the section between third and fourth. And still about one other six months, I think, of pain that we're going to go through in the downtown. But it is improving our downtown area, makes it much more friendly, inviting for citizens and tourists to come down and visit. So we appreciate all the work that is going into that. I don't have anything else. And as continually, I, I think our city clerk and our deputy, deputy city clerk for all the information keep me out of trouble. So thanks again. And once again, thanks to all of you for being here in council chambers and those who participated via Zoom. We do want to remind everybody to please, if you did not sign in, to sign in on, for this meeting attendance, so that we have that. Also, we have a nice lunch prepared, so please stick around for that. And yes.
Mayor Watkins, real quickly, I didn't want to miss the opportunity. I wasn't sure if Penny had an update from Congressman Gosar's office that we didn't include in the top portion of the agenda just since we are a little ahead of schedule today.
I appreciate that. Penny, would you like to come forward, please? I don't think anybody's going to argue with this.
...an opportunity to give a quick update. Mayor, mayors and staff, appreciate that. Penny Pugh with Congressman Gosar's office. We had our Academy Day. Many of you know that the congressman gets to present and nominate for four of the five academies. And we had a, on the 16th, we had about 100 kids show up with their parents. We did have one from Kingman that drove down to Goodyear. So that was a pretty proud moment for those parents, and she's very qualified. We also, Congressman sponsored a resolution condemning Hamas and, and the tragedy in Israel, which we are all very aware of if you have any sort of news feed on your phone. He also sent a letter to Secretary of the VA, Madonna, questioning the guidelines that are being provided to the staff at the VA, encouraging reproductive health, which in fact is abortion, and asserts that men can become pregnant. And the congressman asked them to And the congressman asked them to please just quit being woke and take care of our veterans, which kind of is a no-brainer. He also requested investigation, since we were talking about water, on the breach of the Mexico Water Treaty, which, from 1944. So he sent a letter to Secretary Holland, asking for that to be looked into. For some background, under the 1944 treaty, US is required to provide Mexico with 1.5 million acre feet of water every year from the Colorado River. And then Mexico has to supply the United States with 1.75 million acre feet of water from the tributaries of the Rio Grande River every five years. The United States has complied, and Mexico has not. So his comment was, if Mexico continues to ignore the responsibilities, the United States should unilaterally remedy the breach and withhold Colorado River water from Mexico and store it in Lake Mead or distribute it to the users. And I know with the talk up here, I can't imagine anyone would be against something like that, and sometimes we're going to have to do that. And of course, inflation continues to rise, I'm not going to go into all of that, but I will tell you that on average, we're finding $709 more dollars a month for each family to purchase goods that they didn't two years ago. So just appreciate everyone, the elephant in the room, there's a speaker vote going on, I think they're on number, I don't know, four? And we, there was no strategy. Congressman voted, did not vote for that with those eight because there wasn't a strategy. You've got to have a strategy if you're going to try and do something like that with the slim margin that Congress has right now. So 217 is the magic number, and currently, it's not there yet, so fingers crossed. We did have to cancel, postpone our Social Security Roundtable that was scheduled for Friday. So if you receive any calls or anything, it was going to be in Goodyear, but we do get folks from Mojave coming down there, so we'll reschedule that for November 9th. Hopefully, we have a speaker by then and some time to have constituent services. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Penny. Any questions for Penny? Before she, before we let you go? Thank you, Penny, appreciate that. Okay, do we need a motion for adjournment, or can we just adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Okay. We are adjourned, thank you. And once again...